So, welcome to our class. And we are now going to continue reading the philosophy of Hinduism. And we are into the fifth study session of the philosophy of Hinduism. We have covered a long distance so far. And I would like to request Shashank to please carry on reading further. Shashank, please go on reading further.
Yeah, thank you sir. Let me now turn to the examination of the philosophy of Hinduism. From the point of view of utility. This examination of Hinduism from this aspect may not be long and detailed. For as Mill pointed out, there is no necessary antagonism, antagonism between justice and utility. In other words, what is unjust to the individual cannot be useful to society. Apart from this, we have before us consequences of caste staring us in the face. The ideal of caste was not mere ideal. The ideal was put into practice, was therefore something real. So that in the matter of the Chaturavarna, the Hindus have very faithfully followed the German philosopher Nietzsche, who said, realize the ideal and idolize the real.
Yes, Shashank, when we will take a pause here. Because I think these two norms that Baba Sambitkar has talked about, which can be used to evaluate or judge a religion, be it any religion, whether it's Hinduism or whether it's Christianity, whether it's Buddhism, whether it's Islam. I think these two criteria has to judge justice and utility. And in this paragraph, Baba Sambitkar has shown that justice and utility cannot be separated. For example, I think this is a very potent statement when we look at the statement like this. What is unjust to the individual cannot be used useful to society. And I think this, 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 this single sentence communicates a lot that injustice to any individual cannot be in the benefit or the utility of the society. So when we talk about the society as a whole and the social utility, we cannot negate an individual. So you know, there has been an argument in the Brahmanical circles that you know, the caste system is useful to the society. You know, because it's, it's the organization of the people into several castes so that the society can function efficiently and you know, there will be the utility for the society. This statement, one line completely devastates the argument of the Brahmanical school because it says that what is unjust to the individual cannot be useful to the society. So there is a direct correlation ship between justice and the utility. And I think that's a very remarkable point that Baba Sambitkar has put in this paragraph. So can we go on reading further?
Sure. The value of the ideal must be tested by its results. If experience therefore must be the criteria, then the ideal of Chaturavarna stands twice condemned. Purely as a form of social organization, it stands condemned. As a producer organization, it stands discredited. As an ideal scheme of distribution, it has miserably failed. If it is an ideal form of organization, how is it that Hinduism has been unable to form a common front? If it is an ideal form of production, how is it that its technique never advanced beyond that of the primitive man? If it is an ideal form of distribution, how is it that it has produced appalling inequality of wealth, immense wealth side by side, extreme poverty?
So I think, Shashank, so we will take a pause here because I think this, this criteria, the, the Chaturavarna as an ideal form of organizing the society has failed from three perspective, from the social organization perspective, it's condemnable. Because you cannot reduce the human personality to the level of slavery. So the first point about its failure is, you know, it needs to be condemned because Chaturavarna as a social organization is not in favor of an individual. The second is a producer's organization, it stands discreeted. Because you know, you cannot have a production, proper production. When the society segregated into the four varnas or thousand of thousands of caste that we see and as a scheme of distribution, because you know, there is a, if there is a production, the way the produce is distributed in the caste system is, you know, a failure because those toiling masses, those who are working very hard, they could, they don't get the proper reward of their, their, their efforts, their, 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 their hard work, isn't it? So I think that's, these three points are very interesting in terms of the social organization, the Chaturavarna as a social organization. And it's true even today that it produced appalling inequality of wealth, immense wealth side by side, extreme poverty, that's true. For even India today, there are people who are so filthy rich in this country and there are masses who are living the life of the abject poverty. So that's, that's the comment on this paragraph. Anybody would like to say anything? Mahasenji, Shashank, Subash, Shilpi?
No, I said comment, quite understood. Thank you. That if any injustice is done against an individual, then it cannot be useful for society, that is, we underline.
In this regard, I have no comments, but earlier the statement, very catchy statement of Dr. Baba Sambitkar, that inequality is the soul of Hinduism. Now this soul word, we Buddhists should discard. Baba Sambitkar might have written earlier when he was Hindu. Isn't it? That soul word because Buddhism has no place for soul.
Yes, Mahasen, please take it as a figurative figure of speech.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't take it.
Just, just I shared my view.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Our, our, our laureate, Shilpi would be able to tell us that this word is a figurative, right, Shilpi?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi, yes sir.
Okay, good, good. So carry on reading further?
Sure. But I do not wish to dismiss the subject too summarily. For I know many Hindus who claim great social utility to the institution of caste and praise Manu for having been so wise and so thoughtful, not only devising it, but in giving it a divine sanction. This view of the caste, yeah, this view of the caste is due to the taking the separate aspects of caste separately. One must take them in conjunction. The resultant social utility or disutility of caste can be asserted only by putting together the separate aspects of caste and judge them in their combination. Following this line of attacking the problem, the following conclusions follow. caste divides laborers. caste disassociates work from interest. caste disconnects intelligence from manual labor. caste devitalizes by denying to him the right to cultivate vital interest. And caste prevents mobilization. caste system is not merely a division of labor. It is also a division of laborers. Civilized society undoubtedly needs division of labor. But in no civilized society is division of labor accompanied by this unnatural division of laborers into watertight compartments. caste system is not merely a division of laborers, which is quite different from the division of labor. It is an hierarchy in which division of laborers are graded one above the other. In no other country is a division of labor accompanied by this creation of laborers. There is also a third point of criticism against this view of the caste system. This division of labor is not spontaneous. It is not based on natural aptitudes. Social and individual efficiency requires us to develop the capacity of an individual to the point of competency to choose and to make his own career. This principle is violated in the caste system insofar as it involves an attempt to appoint task to individuals in advance. Selected not on the basis of trained original capacities, but on that of the social status of the parents. Looked at from the another point of view, this stratification of occupation, which is the result, result of the caste system, is positively pernicious. Industry is never static, it undergoes rapid and abrupt changes. With such changes, an individual must be free to change his occupations. Without such freedom to adjust himself to changing circumstances, it would be impossible for him to gain his livelihood. Now, the caste system will not allow Hindus to do occupation where they are wanted. If they do not belong to them by heredity. If a Hindu is seen to starve rather than to take a new occupation, not assigned to his caste, the reason is to be found in the caste system. By not permitting readjustment of occupation, caste becomes a direct cause of the much of the unemployment we see in the country. As a form of division of labor, the caste system suffers from another serious defect. The division of labor brought about by the caste system is not a division based on the choice. Individual sentiment, individual preference has no place in it. It is based on a dogma of predestination. Consideration of social efficiency would compel us to recognize that the greatest evil in the industrial system is not so much poverty and the suffering that it involves. As the fact that so many persons have callings which make no appeal to those who are engaged in them. Such callings constantly provoke want to aversion, ill will and the desire to evade. There are many occupation in India which on account of the fact that they are regarded as a degraded by the Hindus, provoke those who are engaged in it to aversion. There is a constant desire to evade and escape from such occupations, which arrives solely because of the blighting effect which they produce upon those who follow them owing to the slight and stigma cast upon them by the Hindu religion.
I think this long paragraph is self-explanatory. And I, we have seen this Hindu argument about the caste system that it's a division of labor and that the society has to be divided on the basis of the labors. The argument that comes on, comes from Adam Smith's Wealth of Nations, that book which has got a sort of capitalist idea, ideal in the world. And here Baba Sambitkar is saying that, okay, division of labors may be okay. But what about the division of the laborers itself? And that laborers is, the division of laborers is a very deep concept if we understand. And the, the occupation doesn't depend on the talent of the people or their inner potential, but it's already predetermined, be distinct by the caste system. And I think this, this particular paragraph, a long paragraph is self-explanatory. And you know, it clearly, this line of attack on the caste system and its utility. So sharp that I think no argument can stand against it because we know that Baba Sambitkar was an economist and you know, he knew, he was more, more, you know, he was also a man who has had not wealth, he was economics. So you know, the, the kind of things that he is trying to elaborate here are so important for us as an argument against the caste system and its so-called utility for the society. Any comments by anybody, anyone would like to, Mahasenji, please go on. I think Mahasen raised his hand. Mahasenji?
Ah, yes. This point, no, as highlighted by the Baba Sambitkar during the mill worker's strike. He had, he had pointed out that in certain sections in the textile mill, scheduled caste laborers are not allowed to work.
Right, 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 right.
So, and this was actually in the legislative assembly also, he, he had raised the issue.
Right, 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 right.
And about this Chaturavarnya, no, he had said that, you know, this, this is a four-story building and there are no steps.
Right, 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 right.
And one has to take birth in that floor and die in that floor itself. There is no promotion or demotion. Police Brahmin cannot become Sudra and the intelligent Sudra cannot become Brahmin. This is the system.
Right.
Chaturavarna system. This also I wanted to share.
Good, very good, very good. Very good. Subashji?
Yeah, thank you, Mangi sir. Actually, so far as fundamental description of Hindu philosophy is concerned, that is well in place. Baba Sambitkar has beautifully explained these things. This watertight compartment and the division of laborers. But because of implementation of constitution, society has, has been going in a transition. So, here, my, my clarity or, you know, curiosity is that how far this notion, how far these things have been changed? Because nowadays, because, because of this fundamental rights, etc. adequate people from the Dalits community and other community, they are coming forward. But still, how far this new philosophy is influencing them to, to, to go, to go as per their sastra's notion? So, I think, a little bit of opening in this watertight compartment so far as definition and fundamental truths are concerned. But how, how other practices are still there? You know, after changing the, you know, what is called this job profession makes a time modern time.
I think this has been assimilated in the society for centuries together. And the Hindu society, they are imbibing on their children right from the beginning, that caste system. And these RASs, they, they said that because of casteism only, India has been united. India is remained united because of the practice of caste system. This is their view, RAS's view. So they would like to, you know, have it continued. And they are trying to do so.
Yes. I think this part is well taken care of in the several writing and speeches of Baba Sambitkar.
Yeah.
Because I think there is this, this spiritual sort of the, you know, power or philosophies or ideologies, they supersede the human rights. Because even when we have the constitution of India in place and there are human rights and there are civil rights in the constitution of India, those, you know, the people don't practice it. So that's why Baba Sambitkar said that we live in a contradiction. That on one hand, we have a political democracy, but on another hand, there is a denial of a social and economic democracy.
Yes, yes.
This, this speaks volumes of what has, you know, happened in this.
That twenty-sixth November speech is very, very important.
Yes, 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 yes.
Sir, may I try to answer a part of Subashar's question?
Should we go on?
Okay, sir. So I mean, meanwhile, reading this, sir, you had like put up a very brilliant question in front of us to think very thoroughly. So, of the aspect and one of the part, we can also see in today's time, in contemporary's time, that, that when a society starts from the very origins of inequality. So it reproduces inequality, it breeds inequality in almost every possible area. So let's say, we have, we've got reservation, we've got representation and stuff. So we have seen that many of the obstacles, first, of Mandal Commission, let's say that, it came very later on, the representation came very later on in the medical field. So practically, when the transition begins to happen, the first and the second generation of the upper caste Hindus of the country were already at a stable place. And then the later generations of the first time learners, let's say that, or after Mandal Commission, or after SCST reservation, the first and the second generation starts to came. So the, so the, the, this, I think, one of the aspect or one of the very nuanced thread I can see from this Baba Sambitkar's text is that the caste system breeds inequality, it reproduce inequality, a society which starts from the line of inequality can never achieve that equal in the stable status. The affirmative action are, I think, one or the other way to make sure that some of the representation and the diversity and the human rights of course are being ensured for the dignitiful life of citizens of the country or of earth. Yeah, so.
No, excellent point, good point. All right, should we proceed on?
Yes.
Yes, Shashank, please go on.
Yeah. The second mistake, the second mistake with those, yeah, Mahasenji. Okay, okay, no, I can see.
Go on.
Okay. The second mistake with it does is to dissociate, this dissociate intelligence from work and create contempt for labor. The theory of the caste is that a Brahmin who is permitted to cultivate his intellect is not permitted to labor. Indeed, he is taught to look down upon labor. While the Sudra who is required to labor is not permitted to cultivate his intelligence. The disastrous consequence of this have been well portrayed by Mr. RC Dutt. caste devitalizes a man. It is a process of sterilization. Education, wealth, labor are all necessary for every individual if it is to reach a free and full manhood. Mere education without wealth and labor is a barren. Wealth without education and wealth is brutal. Each is necessary to everyone. They are necessary for the growth of a man. That the Brahmin should cultivate knowledge, Shatriya should bear arms, the Vaishya should trade and the Sudra should serve is presented as a theory of the mutual interdependence found in the family. It is asked, why should the Sudra need trouble to acquire wealth when the three varnas are there to support him? Why need the Sudra bother to take education when the Brahmin to whom he can go when the occasion for reading or writing arises? Why need the Sudra worry to arm himself because there is a Shatriya to protect him? The theory of the Chaturavarna understood in the sense may set to be look upon the Sudra as a ward and the three varnas as his guardians. Thus interpreted, it is simple and alluring theory. Assuming this to be the correct view of the underlying conception of Chaturavarna, it seems to me that the system is neither foolproof nor nave-proof. What is to happen if the Brahmins, Vaishya and Shatriya fail to pursue knowledge, to engage in economic enterprises and to be efficient soldier, which are their respective functions? Contrarywise, suppose that they discharge the functions, but flout their duty to Sudra or to one another. What is to happen to the Sudra if the three classes refuse to support him on fair terms or combine to keep him down? Who is to safeguard the interests of Sudra or for the matter of that of the Vaishya and Shatriya when the person who is trying to take advantage of his ignorance is the Brahmin? Who is to defend the liberty of Sudra or that of the Brahmin and the Vaishya? And when the person who is robbing him of is the Shatriya. Interdependence of one class on another class is inevitable. Every dependence of one class upon another may sometimes become allowable. But why make one person depend upon another in the matter of his vital needs? Education everyone must have, means of defense everyone must have. These are the paramount requirements of every man for his self-preservation. How can the fact that his neighbor is educated and armed help a man who is uneducated and disarmed? The whole theory is absurd. These are the questions which the defenders of Chaturavarna do not seem to be troubled about. But they are very pertinent questions. Assuming their conception of Chaturavarna, that the relationship between the different classes is that of ward and guardian is a real conception underlying Chaturavarnya. It must be admitted that it makes no provision to be, to safeguard the interests of the ward from the ministries of the guardian. Whether the relationship of guardian and ward was a real underlying conception on which Chaturavarna was based. There is no doubt that in practice, the relation was that of the master and the servant. The three classes Brahmin, Shatriya and Vaishya, although not very happy in their mutual relationship, managed to work by compromise. The Brahmin flattered the Shatriya and both led the Vaishya live in order to be able to live upon him. But the three agreed to beat down Sudra. He was not allowed to acquire wealth lest he should be independent of the three varnas. He was prohibited from acquiring knowledge lest he should keep a steady vigil regarding his interests. He was prohibited from bearing arms lest he should have the means to rebel against an authority. That is this how the Sudra were treated by the Trivarnikas. Is evidenced by the laws of Manu. There is no code of laws more infamous regarding the social rights than the laws of Manu. Any instance from anywhere of social injustice must pale before it. Why have the masses of people tolerated the social levels to which they have been subjected? There have been social revolution in other countries of the world. Why have there not been social revolution in India is a question which has incessantly troubled me. There is only one answer which I can give. And it is that, that the lower caste of the Hindus have been completely disabled for a direct action on account of this Richard system of Chaturavarna. They could not bear arms and without arms, it could not rebel. They were all ploff man or rather condemned to be ploff man. And they were allowed to convert their ploff share into swats. They had no bionets and therefore everyone who chose plops did sit upon them. On account of the Chaturavarna, they could receive no education. They could not think out or know the way to the salvation. They were condemned to be lowly and not knowing the way of escape or and not having the means of escape. They become reconciled to eternal servitude, which they accepted as their inescapable fate. It is true that even in Europe, the strong has not shrunk from the exploitation, neither the spoilation of the weak. But in Europe, the strong have never contrived to make the weak helpless against exploitation so shamelessly as was the case in India. Among the Hindus, social war has been raging between strong and the weak far more violently in Europe than it has ever been in India. Yet, the weak in Europe has had in him freedom of military service. His physical weapon, in suffrage, his political weapon and in education, his moral weapon. Three weapons for emancipation were never withheld by the strong from the weak in Europe. All these weapons were however denied to the masses in India by Chaturavarnya. There cannot be a more degrading system of social organization than Chaturavarnya. It is a system which threatens, paralyzes and cripples the people from helpful activity. This is no exaggeration. History bears ample evidence. There is only one period in Indian history, which is the period of freedom from greatness and glory. That is the period of Maurya empire. At all other times, the country suffered from defeat and darkness. But the Maurya period was a period when Chaturavarnya was completely unelated when the Sudras who constituted the mass of the people came into their own and became the rulers of the country. The period of the defeat and darkness is a period when Chaturavarnya flourished to the damnation of the greater part of the people of the country.
Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Unless there is anything to be offered by anybody in terms of this reading, please go on. I think this paragraphs is self-explanatory. It is a very important paragraph and I think it's a self-explanatory, but I think we should go on discussing if anybody is having anything.
We can go ahead.
Is that okay? We go ahead?
Yeah, just anyone can recall this Maurya.
Yeah, just anyone can recall this Maurya period.
Yes, yes.
There's the time of the Ashoka, there's a time after the Buddha. When the Chaturvarna was weakened and almost defeated for about hundred and forty years in this country. And then there was a, there was a counter-revolution where this Manusmiti came into being and all this, you know, counter-revolutionary text written.
Yeah, I know. I was looking from quite a few point of view, of course, that Ashoka period was golden period. For science as well, science and technology development also uh beside the spiritual upliftment. So, no problem can look into this.
Yeah, but I I I really want to add on the this Maurya period um according to the Nobel laureate Amarthasain. When he like, you know, research into the the Buddhist period or the Ashokan period. He measured the G D P as thirty-three point thirty-two or something, you know, and that period. Uh in the Buddhist period or Maurya period or Ashokan period. But when the Chaturvarnya came into picture, when we like applied this liberalization, globalization and privatization in nineteen ninety-one. That GDP was brought down by thirty-three percent to two point five percent. So, India became from the rich country, the poor country because of the Chaturvarnya. So such a degradation had happened because of the Chaturvarnya.
Good.
Yep.
Anything else? Any comments?
So it seems that three hundred twenty-one B C to one eighty-five B C.
Go ahead.
Alright, then we can move ahead.
Okay. caste prevents mobilization. Occasion arise when society must mobilize all its resources to one end in order to save itself from a catastrophe. To take a catastrophe like war, society must mobilize all its resources for militarization. Everyone must do war. Everyone must be a soldier. Is this possible under the theory of caste? Obviously not. Indeed, the destiny of a defeat which has been the lot of India throughout this history is due to caste. Castes prevented general mobilization. Or the extent of mobilization was of a very limited character. Only the Shatriyas were expected to fight. The rest, the Brahmins and the Vaishyas were not armed and the Sudras who formed the large majority of the country were disarmed. The result was that once a small class of Shatriyas were defeated by foreign foe, the whole country fell at its feet. It could offer no resistance. It was not capable of resistance. Indian wars have been mostly wars of single battles or single campaigns. This was due to the fact that once the Shatriya failed, everything failed. Why? Simply because there was no general mobilization and the theory deeply embedded in the psychology of the people. If this conclusion are sound, how can a philosophy which bisects society in fragments? Which dissociates work from interest, which disconnects intelligence from labor. Which expropriates the rights of man to interest vital to life. And which prevents society from mobilizing resources from common action in the hour of tangent. Be set to satisfy the test of social utility.
So I think that's, that's very good, you know, it's where Baba Sambetka proves here conclusively that, you know, there is no social utility in the Chaturvarna. And I think we need no further objection to that because it has been so well clearly argued by Baba Sambetkar. So I think let's move on to the next section.
Yeah. The philosophy of Hinduism therefore neither satisfy the test of social utility nor does it satisfy the test of individual justice. The result of my analysis is so odd that it will surprise many. Astonishing some may even say that. If the conclusion are so odd, then there must be something wrong in my analysis of the philosophy of Hinduism. I must make this objection. To those who refuse to accept my analysis, I say that define my analysis odd because they do not have a correct notion. What is central in the philosophy of Hinduism? If they do, they will feel no surprise at my conclusions. This matter is so important that I must stop to explain it. It may be recalled that the foregoing analysis of the religious revolution showed that. Religious ideals as forms of divine governance for human society fall into two classes. One in which society is a center and the other in which individually just center. The same analysis showed that for the former, the appropriate taste of what is good and what is right. That is, the test of the moral order is utility while for the latter, the taste is justice. Now, the reason why the philosophy of Hinduism does not answer the test either of utility or of justice. Is because the religion's ideal of the Hinduism for divine governance of human society. Is an ideal which falls into a separate class by itself. It is an idol in which individual is not the center. The center of the idea is neither individual nor society. It is a class, the class of Superman called Brahmins. Those who will bear the dominant and devastating fact in mind will understand. Why the philosophy of Hinduism is not founded on individual justice or social utility? The philosophy of Hinduism founded on a totally different principle. To the question what is right and what is good, the answer which the philosophy of Hinduism gives is remarkable. It holds that to be right and good, the act must serve the interest of this class of Superman. Namely, the Brahmins. Oscar Wilde said that to be intelligible is to be found out. Manu is neither afraid nor ashamed of being found out. Indeed, Manu does not leave it to be found out. He expresses his view in resonant and majestic notes as who are the Superman? And anything which serves the interest of Superman is alone entitled to be called right and good. Let me quote Manu.
I think uh this, this paragraph is very important because we have already studied about the uh. Uh the revolutions that have taken place within the religion and initially the society was at the center of the religion and then. The individual become the center of the religion and then uh when Baba Sambetkar has looked at this Hinduism. You found that neither the individual nor the society is the center of the religion. So what is the center of the religion is a class and the particular class, the Brahmanical class is the center of it. And what is right or wrong is determined by the interest of the Brahmins, whether it's right or wrong. So I think this is very significant in a way and in the next, when Baba Sambetkar goes to look at Manu. He's showing that how the Manusmiti has raised the status of the Brahmin class or the Brahmins to the status of the Superman. That they are. That's what we see in the society even today, the Brahmins have been, have been able to fool the people that they are, they are the Bhudevas, Bhushus. They are the gods on the earth, you know, they cannot be challenged, they are the, uh you know, the god incarnate on the earth themselves and that's still valid, you know. This, this idea goes on everywhere in the, in the Indian societies, I think. This is the crux of the matter as to why the conclusions drawn by Baba Sambetkar, you know, are so radically different. Because Baba Sambetkar hits at the core of the Hindu caste system that is the interest of one class only, the Brahmin class. So anything to comment on because let us code, let's read what Manu says about these Brahmins. Go on, Shashank, tell us what Manu says about Brahmin.
On account of its preeminence, on account of its superiority, of its origin, on account of its observance of particular restrictive rules. And account of its particular sanctification, the Brahman is the lord of all Varnas.
The lord of all Varnas, go on.
He proceeds to amplify his reason and does so in the following characteristics manner. As the Brahmana sprang from the Prajapatis, God's mouth as he was first born. And as he possesses the Veda, he is by right the lord of his whole creation. For the self-existence, Swambu that is God, having performed austerities, produce him first from his own mouth. In order that offerings might be conveyed to the gods and mains and that is this universe might be preserved. What created can surpass him? Through whose mouth the gods continually consume the sacrificial viands and the mains, the offerings to the dead. Of created beings, the most excellence are said to be those which are animated, of the animated. Those who subsist by intelligence, of the intuition, mankind and of the men, the Brahmanas. Besides the reason given by the Manu, the Brahmin is the first rank, first in rank because he was produced by God from his mouth. In order that the offerings might be conveyed to the gods and minds. And Manu gives another reason for the supremacy of the Brahmins, he says. The very birth of Brahmana is an eternal incarnation of the sacred law, Veda. For he is born to fulfill the sacred law and becomes one with Brahman God. A Brahmana coming into existence is born at the highest on the earth, the lord of all created beings for the protection of the treasury of the law. Manu concludes by saying that, the Brahmin eats but his own food, veers but his own apparel. Bestows but his own in arms, other bottles subsist through the benevolence of the Brahmana. Because according to Manu, whatever exists in the world is the property of the Brahmana. On account of the excellence of its origin, the Brahmana is indeed entitled to it all. Manu directs, let the king after rising early in the morning worship Brahmanas. Who are well-versed in the threefold sacred signs and learn in quality and follow their advice. Let him daily worship aged Brahmins who know the Veda and are pure. Let the king having risen at early dawn respectfully attend to Brahmins, learn in three Vedas and science of ethics. And by their decision, let him abide. Constantly must he show respect to Brahmins who have grown old both in years and in pity. Who know the scriptures, when body and mind are pure, for he who honors age will perpetually be honored even by cruel dominance. Let him not although in greatest distress for the money provoke Brahmins to anger by taking their property. For they once enraged could immediately by sacrifices, imprecation destroy him with his troops, elephants, horses and cars. Finally, Manu says, the Brahman is declared to be the creator of the world, the punisher, the teacher. And hence a benefactor of all created beings. To him, let no man say anything unproficiatous nor use any harsh words. To conclude and complete the theory of Superman and of what is right and good, let me reproduce the following two texts from Manu. But later Sudra serve Brahmins either for the sake of heaven or with a view to both his, this life and next. For he who is called a servant of a Brahman thereby gains all his ends. The service of the Brahmana alone is declared to be an excellent occupation for a Sudra. For whatever else besides this, he may perform will bear no fruit. And Manu adds, no collection of wealth must be made by Sudra, even though he able to do it. For a Sudra who has acquired wealth gives pain to Brahman. The about text from the Manu disclosed the core and heart of the philosophy of Hinduism. Hinduism is the gospel of Superman and it teaches that what is right for the Superman is the only thing. Which is called a morally right and morally good.
Yes, I think that's, that's a long reading and though it's very clearly expounded by Baba Sambetkar. I think, you know, if someone have to talk or, you know, make, make comments, please go, go on. In a way, it shows what is Hinduism, Hinduism is nothing but Brahmanism. The core of so-called Hinduism is nothing but the interest of the Brahmins and the welfare of the Brahmins, nothing else. Because according to the Manu, the everything belongs to Brahman, all the classes should, are there to serve him and his, his interests. So I think this, this, this really clears a lot of grounds when we talk about the philosophy of Hinduism. Philosophy of Hinduism is nothing but the philosophy of Brahmanism itself. Anybody would like to say anything?
Sir, I think uh the uh text they have created. Uh dies uh once the law uh stands against it. It has uh not a very deep values in it. And this is, these are the things that we people have to learn and to spread it. Means uh uh they, they, so many, so many uh blind uh faiths they have generated. But with the emergence of laws, uh time to time, all got vanished.
Yes. I think that's why, you know, it's very important for people to understand what is the Hindu religion. Because nobody knows what is Hindu religion, nobody knows what is the philosophy of, of Hinduism. And you, you, you try to argue with them, they will talk about Gandhi and whatnot. But in a sense, the heart of the philosophy of Hindu religion is the philosophy of Chaturvarna and that of the Brahmanism. And if we can make it clear to lot of Sudras and see that, you know, how it is anti-tactical to the human rights. To the uh, you know, development of a country, to the constitutional values that on which the country is founded, constituted. I think it can, it can get rid of that, but you know, nobody talks about Hinduism because Hinduism is like a multi-headed hydra. And you know, you, you, they, they have created so many things, so much, so much confusion about the religion that everything goes on. In India, they call it Hinduism, like for example Buddhism and Brahmi, uh Jainism also, they say that they are the branch of Hinduism, how is it possible? Because the core of Buddhism is equality and the core of Hinduism is Brahmanism which is inequality, how can both be the. Yeah, you know, have the same sort of philosophical origin cannot. And same with everything and the, 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 it had happened in last two hundred years that people like Raja Ramhun Rai. And Keshubchand Sen and you know, these all these Brahmanical so-called educated people, they have fooled the masses. Claiming that Hinduism is monotheism, Hinduism is good and you so on and so forth, you know, trying to borrow it from. The monotheism of Christianity and all, so Hinduism as you know, Mahatma Jyoti Bhakula used to say. It's a manipulated, manufactured, crafted religion by the Brahmins to serve their interests. Isn't it? So all the time we have to talk about Hinduism as Brahmanism, you know, you minus. Uh Brahmanism from Hinduism, we are okay, we don't have any, any cons with you, we don't have any trouble with you. We just don't want Brahmanism, we don't want the supremacy of one particular class of people. It goes against humanity, it goes against the interest of the country, it goes against everything that stands for good, that stands for welfare of all.
True sir, is it not a irony that uh after, after passing this after independence? Uh we have spent almost seventy years and still, still people are not coming out of this uh.
Well, they have no means, you know, there is no education, there is no, uh you know, the, 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 you know, there is no. Uh awakening of the masses, I don't know, those who can, you know, the educated Sudras, O B Cs, you know. They can learn these texts, if they can understand it, even if they understand it, they have to act upon it. And therefore, you know, uh it's very interesting for us that. Because the mass is so ignorant, the mass is fooled by the Brahmins, the mass believe that to practice the caste is the religion. Isn't it? That's the basic psychology to practice one's caste because one's religion and the religious ideas are not difficult to remove from the minds of the people.
Sir, uh if, if one is habitual of eating, eating uh sugar. And uh means sugar-coated things and we have to give the replacement of it. Miss, people are used, uh used to having in their mouth tasted the sweet and Buddhism is the answer.
Yes. The question is how we spread Buddhism, so discussions, writings, speeches and so forth.
And practice also our character.
Yes.
Establishing Budviara for the uh masters uh that uh means it, it's a machinery work now. Means we have to, we have to work for it.
That's true, it's a missionary work. So what, what I was suggesting, I think uh because the next paragraph is so important, I was thinking we should take a pause here for today. If you all agree. What, what I was suggesting, I think because the next paragraph is so important, I was thinking we should take a pause here for today, if you all agree and the next part that follows this discussion is important and we can, we can carry on the next class, what do you think? What do you want?
I agree.
Agreed, because it is having a very deep involvement of a philosophy that is, that, that goes to the revolution and counter-revolution, I think. It had it worked.
Yeah, 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 so what I'm thinking is, you know, next time we, because we are going to look at Nietzsche and Hitler and so on and so forth. So I think let's, let's take a pause for here today and, and next, next class, we will look at those deep philosophical issues.
Sure, sir.
Is that all right for everybody?
Goodbye.
Okay, for all, okay, good, good, good. So, see you next week, seven o'clock.